Good evening, welcome to the Township of Hillsborough Planning Board Public Meeting, November 8th, 2018. Call to order, Pledge of Allegiance, everyone please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Dr. Wagner?
Here.
Heshtag?
Here.
Sirov?
Here.
Sarachi?
Here.
Vice Chair Julie?
Here. Next would be the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Public Meeting Minutes from October 4th, 2018.
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, yourself, Mr. Sarachi, Mr. Peace and Mr. Heshtag.
Okay, I'm gonna back up for a second because I forgot to announce the notice of the public meeting, so it's just, I'm gonna back up a second here. So this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975 Sunshine Law. Now we can proceed to the October 4th, 2018 Minute Meeting.
I'll make a motion to move 10 for 18 minutes.
Second.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Peace? Yes.
Mr. Heshtag?
Yes.
Mr. Sarachi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julie? Yes. Okay, next would be a disposition of resolution. The resolution is application number 07 PB-26 MJ 2018 Extension Request. It's the applicant is the extended preliminary and final major subdivision approval, applicant name John Zamkotovic.
Zamkotovic.
Extension of room drive, block 199, lot 18.
Same four individuals, Mr. Chairman, as those who voted on the minutes.
That would be...
Yourself, Mr. Sarachi, Mr. Heshtag and Mr. Peace.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Peace?
Yes.
Mr. Heshtag?
Yes.
Sarachi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julie?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, I guess we had discussed an 11:29 business meeting, do we need to talk about that, or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've scheduled and hopefully we get enough people to attend an additional meeting, it's a business meeting, on November 29th. The sole purpose of that meeting is to review the reexamination report, which you all have in front of you in that envelope with the very bright green label, so that we would consider it and hopefully adopt it that night. So if we could at this moment take a quick poll of who can make it?
Yes, I can.
Ken?
I can.
I am not available.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, we had a good session about a week or two ago.
Yeah.
And we came up with some good, you know, good reviews, some good additional input, so I think just spending some time in a business meeting, kinda going over it, I think would be well spent, so.
You can make it.
I can make it.
I can.
Yes, for me.
Great, thank you. You have them in your envelope, so if you could just read them between now and the 29th, that'd be great. Thanks.
Is the stuff that we discussed at the meeting in there, or just kinda?
Yeah, it was updated.
Okay, alright, great. Do we need a motion, or?
Well, that night we will.
Okay.
We need a motion to add the meeting, though.
No, it's on the agenda.
On the agenda, okay.
Yeah, we have noticed, we put a notice in the paper for the 29th meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. So at this point, on the agenda, is an executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask for an executive session at this time, for the purposes of discussing pending or anticipated litigation attorney-client privilege matters involving LD Construction and other related items. I don't expect the meeting to be more than, the executive session to be more than probably 10 to 15 minutes. I'd like it now.
So do we need a motion?
I need a motion to go on to executive session.
Move to go to an executive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Chairman, I'm seeking a motion of the board to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that all members of the planning board present at the commencement of the executive session are present at the recommencement of the open session. Also attending the executive session was the board attorney, the board planner, the board engineer. The board was given an update by their attorney as to the ongoing affordable housing litigation between the township and multiple interveners of fair share housing. Questions were asked and answered regarding same, as well as a discussion about a applicant who is currently on the agenda this evening, which is LD Construction LLC. Mr. Chairman, there is no formal action that needs to be taken, therefore at this point you can return to the regular order of the agenda for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bernstein. So we will just continue, there's no special committee reports. Next would be any business from the floor, so at this time we can make a motion to open it to the public at this point.
So moved.
For any matter not on the agenda.
For any matter not on the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next would be the public hearing, the subdivision, I'm sorry, was there any business on the floor before I continue? No? No, okay, alright, so we will continue with the subdivision site plan application, LD Construction LLC, Hillsborough Village Center, file 18 PB-09 INF, block 178, lots 4, 636, Route 206, Lot 5, 638, Lot 6, 646, Lot 7, 648, Lot 8, 652, Lot 9, 656, Lot 10, 658, Lot 11, 662, and Lot 12.01, 450 Amwell Road. The applicant is seeking informal review for mixed-use development to consolidate lots 4 to 11 and construct 13 separate buildings to include 191 total apartment units and 2,800 square foot of retail space associated parking, stormwater and driveway access through 206 and connection to block 178, Lot 12.01. Property is located in a mixed-use inclusionary overlay district with the TC Town Center zoning District and the ASD Architectural and Site Design Overlay Zone. Counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ron Shimanowitz, I'm from the firm of Hut and Shimanowitz for the applicant LD Construction LLC. As the chair stated, what we for you tonight, for an informal review as required under your TC zone, this site is part of the Affordable Housing Compliance Plan that the township is working on. It's been previously zoned to include an overlay. The proposal includes some 191 total units with a 24% set aside of affordables yielding 46 affordable units. There's also a mixed-use component to this pursuant to your TC zone, so there is a minimum of 28,000 square feet of retail that's included in the proposal. We do have the two letters that came out from this request, one from Mr. Maske and one from Mr. White. And with that brief introduction and the chair's permission, with me tonight, Mr. Mike Ford from Van Cleef, and he's gonna come forward and present the concept plan to you informally.
Great.
Mike, if you can come forward. Are we swearing witnesses?
You want us to swear?
Sure.
Yes, I do. Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, with Van Cleef Engineering Associates, 32 Brower Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey. I have a colorized exhibit to put up, would you like me to do that?
Sure, that'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, just for the purposes of the record, Mr. Ford has appeared as a professional engineer before the board on more occasions than I think even he wants to mention, as well as other land use boards, planning and zoning boards in this township and elsewhere. And while we're not necessarily having to qualify him because it's an informal, at least the record should indicate such.
Thank you. The, as was introduced, the project is on Route 206 in the Town Center Zone, in a area that was specifically zoned for the mixed-use inclusionary development that's been proposed. Over the last, probably about 10 years, actually, we've been working on this project in various stages in design and discussion, and specifically within the last 12 months, with your staff meeting numerous times to look at the layout. At the bottom of the page is Route 206, just to the east of the site is the, what was, I guess now it's the Starbucks Shopping Center area, and that's the driveway to Starbucks off of Route 206. We've proposed our access driveway immediately across from that, so where you have 800 feet of frontage along Route 206 today with multiple driveways from various residential properties that are in disrepair and some commercial, now you'll have one driveway. There's three buildings lining up along Route 206 in accordance with the design standards for the overlay. They would be the mixed-use buildings, which would have the retail component on the first floor and the residential on the second and third floors. And then to the rear of that, or to the east, are the other apartment buildings, all three stories with garages for parking. And with orientation with regards to the location of the property, we're just to the south of Bottle King, the Bottle King Shopping Center. And then to the east is another property owned by the applicant, Amwell Mall, and we're proposing a driveway connection to Amwell Mall where, I'll say, Bagel Bop is and Victor's Pizza, and that would provide for transverse access between the two properties and access to Amwell Road, supplementing the 206 access. And then just at the top of the page to the right is the post office. There's public sewer and water available for the property, we're proposing an onsite underground detention basin. The parking's been laid out in accordance with the zoning with even the specifics as to the maximum allowable parking spaces in a row, without interruption from a landscaped island. That'll summarize, there's also a recreational facility component of building right in the middle of the property, right at the, in head of the access driveway along Route 206.
Thank you, Mike.
So what are some of the other buildings behind the mixed-use?
Oh, they're all apartment buildings.
Oh, they are?
Yes. The ordinance that was adopted for this specific overlay dictates the building maximum size even. Each of those apartment buildings would have a maximum of 15 units in it. And they're all apartment buildings with garages on the first floor, so the tenants would have a garage plus also a driveway leading to the garage.
So retail and apartments?
No, the retail component is only within the three buildings fronting on Route 206.
Do you have parking in the front there? Is there enough room for parking in the front or is it in the back?
All the parking is to the rear of the buildings, yes.
So to get there, you have to either go to the light or the next entrance, and to get to those?
For access to the parking headed southbound on Route 206, you drive into the driveway, and we're proposing a left turn lane on Route 206 to get in if you're headed northbound. There's also the connection via driveway access to the existing shopping center that fronts Amwell Road.
Mike, how many existing properties are there on that area right now?
Lots 1, 4 through 11, so it's eight properties.
Eight properties.
Is there underground parking for the three that front on Route 206?
No, they would have the retail component on the first floor level.
Okay, so there's no, for the residents on levels 2 and 3?
Correct, they would be within the parking areas, the at-grade parking areas, to the rear of those buildings. That would be their parking. And it would also share as use for the parking to support the retail component, which is...
Is there a distinction between retail parking and residential parking?
Right now, we haven't proposed that on the plan, where it's designated parking spaces? No.
Okay. Is the, like in the back, there's three stories, I guess most of them are three stories?
All but the community recreational building, which is two stories, and that's, again, dictated by the code.
Okay, I think you might have just mentioned it, that there are garages, but is it only a garage for the first story apartment, and then the second and third would be different apartments that don't have a garage?
Perhaps that's a question for the architect that's here.
Okay, it can wait, it can wait.
Yeah.
Traffic flow, potentially?
We've...
Egress and...
Excuse me?
Entrance and egress, or?
Right.
Like all through one way, or?
We've all, actually, it's DOT would have jurisdiction over Route 206. We've actually made a formal application to DOT for the DOT access permit, we know that would take some time to process, and we've had informal conversations with DOT about the DOT access.
I know when you pull into like Bagel Bistro now, formerly Bagel Bop, the, on the right side in the back there, there's the basin that I see on the design here.
Correct.
Behind that, there's condos and, right, there's another development.
You can actually see it on that rendering just to the upper left-hand corner, that would be the manors.
Right, right.
Correct.
So I was just wondering, you know, I'm sure a lot of design is included in this for like water management, and because it's a lot of development, a lot of this land isn't developed now?
Yeah, right, yeah, the stormwater management, we've done a full stormwater management design, detailed report, operation owner's manual.
Okay.
That'll be part of, this is the informal, and the next step will be our formal with all those details.
With so many buildings so close by, I'm sure a lot of care was taken to make sure there wouldn't be any negative impact in that area.
Correct, yeah. Most of the site drains toward Route 206, there's only a small portion that drains to the rear, and it actually drains toward that existing detention basin on the other property that the applicant also owns, that the one you mentioned.
Okay.
But Bagel Bistro.
Bistro, yeah.
Sorry.
As part of the application to the Department of Transportation for a signal at that new proposed entrance, I know there's one where the Bottle King is across, you know, further up the road as you're heading north on 206, so your intersection where you're proposing left-hand turn across 206 into the development, there is not, obviously there's no development there, there's no signal there.
Correct.
Is that what you're applying for, or is that determination made by you, or is that made by the state?
I'm sure the state will weigh in on our application at this point, and we have a traffic consultant that prepared a full report, and we're not proposing a controlled, signalized intersection there. It would only be a left turn into our site. Right now, the turn into the driveway opposite us, which leads to the, what was Stop &amp; Shop Shopping Center, is a restricted, no left turn in.
Correct, it's a right turn only.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'll also mention, you mentioned that the driveways will kind of, there'll be an extension back, like I guess past Victor's or Bagel Bop and Bistro, so I guess a lot more traffic might go that way, for a shortcut, and then maybe add a left turn, and I'm sure there's...
Yeah, that's been part of our analysis, we've considered that, and, you know, obviously...
Dangerous left turn right there out of Bagel Bistro.
Out onto Amwell Road, correct.
If it's more cars, that could be a problem.
There is a driveway, there is a driveway connection now between the Bagel Bistro site and the municipal, the municipal parking ride and Bottle King, which would get you to the traffic light by the post office and allow you to make that left turn in a more controlled manner.
Right.
Yeah, and that's a nice connection. We thought all this really was a good planning layout, both from a pedestrian and a vehicular circulation pattern.
Right.
The conductivity, but, you know, to allow for flexibility and access to safe egress and access to the site.
Yeah, it could just potentially require some more rules, just to make sure the traffic flows just in one direction in certain spots, maybe.
Right.
I'm no expert. Mike, could you just talk briefly about any like sustainable projects in there, walkways, benches, you know, things for, you know, since it's an overlay project with Town Center, you know, the, just kind of things like that?
Yeah, there is sidewalks throughout, there'd be a sidewalk along Route 206, along the frontage of the, I'll say, the retail first floor, you know, connection, that would be across the entire frontage with sidewalks leading back into the property. And then those retail spaces on the first floor of the front three buildings along Route 206 would have a large, larger, wider sidewalk along them, you know, those areas, because we kind of envisioned, you know, really two fronts, if you will, one along Route 206 and one facing into the property where the parking is, the onsite parking. And yes, there would be opportunities for street frontier, that kind of connectivity, and we're proposing a pedestrian access along with the vehicular driveway access to the Bagel Bistro site. And the, you know, the area where the parking ride is, which would then connect you over to where the post office is.
So I guess there's a couple of reports from Mr. Maske and for Mr. White, do you guys have anything that you want to talk about, or?
No, there's nothing to add at this point, Mr. Chairman.
The only question I have about the underground detention basins, where they're gonna ultimately outlet to, would be the DOT system, or?
DOT, both of them, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Counsel, do you have anybody else?
We do not, there was one question about the, for the architect regarding the parking underneath, we could have the architect come up very quickly and answer that if you wish.
Sure.
Take one minute, Rob Larson, come forward.
I do. Sure, Robert Larson, L-A-R-S-E-N.
Just for the record, obviously we're not looking to call, if I could just give the board a little bit of your professional background.
Sure, I am a licensed professional planner, licensed registered architect here in the state of New Jersey, have been for many years. I've had the opportunity to testify in front of this board, as well as many others throughout the state, in both capacities.
Thank you.
Rob, there's a question regarding the configuration of the building, particularly with regard to parking garages, if you could address the board member's question.
Sure, I'm not sure what maybe the question came, so the garages are, there are four garages for every five units, right? So one in every five actually parks in the field, but four have them directly connected. So they're, they are able to access them from their own door and from their unit, right? So four of every five have a private garage connected to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rob, appreciate it. We have nothing else to present, Mr. Chairman, if there are other questions, we can certainly field them, but other than that, we've made our presentation.
Okay, anybody else have anything need to ask, or I guess anybody from the public at this point, have any questions? Okay. Alright, well, we appreciate your presentation, and thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for hearing us.
Okay, next, next up we have SAI Middlesex Farms, file 18 PB-06 MSP, block 58, lot 1.08, F/K/A lot 1, One Harvard Way, applicant seeking amended final preliminary and final major site plan, parking waivers, buffer waiver, and submission waivers from submitting a TIS, EIS, and CIS to construct an additional 27 porous pavement parking spaces on property in the I-3 Light Industrial Zoning District, EC Review 10, 2218. Counsel.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, my name is Alex Fisher from the law firm Savo Shaw Gillespie O'Grady and Fisher, representing the applicant, SAI Middlesex Farms, in this matter. The applicant here seeks site plan approval to add 27 parking spaces made of porous pavement to the existing parking lot serving the office warehouse facility at One Harvard Way, block 58, lot 1.08, located in the I-3 industrial zone, basically to stop people from parking on Harvard Way and make sure there's sufficient parking, and also to come into compliance with the township's parking requirements. The application does not require any variances, it has a few minor design waivers, just briefly, one of them is 10 by 20 parking spaces are required, the applicant is seeking 9 by 18 to match the size of the existing parking spaces, so you don't have different sized parking spaces in the lot. The two-way aisle is supposed to be 30 feet, the existing aisles are 25 feet, and the applicant is seeking to match that, so you don't have different sized aisles. And the ordinance requires that parking lots have a 30-foot buffer from the road, and the parking lots now have a 7-foot buffer, and that's going to be maintained, because the existing parking lots are going to be maintained. So I have one witness tonight, the project civil engineer, Mike Ford of Van Cleef. If there are any questions, no questions for me, I'd like to have him sworn, please. Mr. Ford?
Yes, Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, Van Cleef Engineering Associates, 32 Brower Lane.
For purposes of the record, Mr. Ford, can you give us your presentation?
Yeah, I'm a licensed planner and engineer in the state of New Jersey, have been for almost 30 years, appeared before this board on numerous occasions in both capacities.
Okay, proceed, please.
Okay, maybe I could just put up a rendering so we can see what we're talking about, and...
Do you want to mark that as Exhibit A1?
Yes. A1 marking is sheet 3 of 5 in the set of plans that was submitted as part of the application, it's a colorized version of the specific area of concern or the area where we're adding the 27 parking spaces. What it illustrates is Campus Drive, which is the access to the, actually the only building in the industrial complex, Campus Drive intersects with Route 206, and then Harvard Way is just off of Campus Drive, and you can actually see on this colorized rendering where we've superimposed an aerial view what we're talking about with some of the cars parking along Harvard Way. What we're proposing to do is simply take the existing parking area in the front of the building, which faces Harvard Way, and expanding it slightly to add 10 parking spaces there, and then to the rear of the building where there's another access driveway to Campus Drive, add another row of parking spaces along that existing access driveway. All this is in areas that were previously disturbed... All this is in areas that were previously disturbed as part of the original construction of the project. We're disturbing three trees, which we believe are actually trees that were planted as part of the original construction for the project approximately 30 years ago. We're going to mitigate for those trees in accordance with the tree mitigation ordinance of the town. As was stated, the proposed 27 parking spaces would be constructed of porous pavement over a bed of stone to promote infiltration and stormwater management. There also is a component with the application that includes some landscaping, where we're disturbing some existing landscaping in order to buffer the parking spaces, as well as modifications to the site lighting to provide for adequate lighting at the 12, or I'm sorry, 27 new parking spaces. There's a minimal area of disturbance and I'll tell the board, we've already been to the Somerset County Planning Board, secured their approval, sign off from the Delaware and Canal Commission, as well as the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District. So all the outside agency approvals that would be required as part of a site plan approval have actually already been addressed. We did receive the two review memo, well, actually, four review memorandums. I'll address the Environmental Commission memorandum dated November 7th. We appeared before the Environmental Commission, discussed the project. They had two suggestions or comments. One was that the porous pavement, stormwater management system have an operation and maintenance manual. That's required by ordinance and town code now. We certainly would do that. And they also suggested that we provide for, like, I'll say, a tree protection fence or a snow fence where we're up against an existing wooded area just beyond the existing parking to protect those trees and we would provide that protection as they suggested. There was a November 7th memorandum from the township fire official that had no objection or comments at this time. And then the two specific memorandums with detailed comments about the project, one dated November 1st, 2018, from Mr. White. And we would agree as any condition of approval this board may grant to address each and every comment in Mr. White's report to his satisfaction. And then there is a November 5th, 2018 review from Patrick Gorman, your zoning officer. And there are specific, I'll say, comments detailing the aspects of the application, the three design waivers, and one general comment, which is, I think, consistent with what the Environmental Commission suggested, and that is to provide for protection of the area that has already been placed in a, in a conservation easement. There's a, a critical area, wetland area to the rear of the site that's in an existing conservation easement. And Mr. Gorman suggests that we provide for protection to make sure there's no disturbance of that area and we would do that.
Okay. Mr. White, did you have a, a chance to take a look? I saw in the stormwater management recommendations, some of the soil information is required to verify the percolation rate was...
We requested that information be submitted.
Right. And we'll do that.
Okay. And then I know you talked about the, the maintenance plan for the pavers, right?
Correct.
That was environmental. Anybody have any questions or... Mr. Maske, you have anything?
No questions.
Okay. Bill, anything?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That's my only witness.
Okay, you have any questions from the public? Want to come up?
Open the public.
State your name and address.
That actually might be too low, Bill.
Too low.
Nothing to do with it.
Susan Gulliford, Hunt Club Road. Other question, what, okay, I'm assuming that the parking spaces you have there meet Hillsborough Township's parking requirements. So what happened that you ended up needing more spaces? What, what changed that you didn't have adequate parking?
Actually, today, we're, we're one short.
Four short.
Four short of the code. And perhaps over time, in the last 30 years, parking standards have changed. So the addition of the 27 will bring us into compliance and also provide for flexibility. The building has a number of tenants and I think it's more an area, not that there's insufficient spaces, but just the, the location of the spaces and the convenience of the spaces.
Anybody else in the public? Okay. All right, so at, at this point, if nobody has anything else...
Motion to close.
Motion to close to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so next up, I guess we can make a motion. Is there, I'm sorry, counsel?
I just urge the board to approve this. The waivers requested are reasonable. This is a, a good project, well thought through, and I'd ask the board to grant the approval.
Thank you, counsel. So at, at this point, we're going to make a motion to approve the SAI Middlesex Farms LP File 18PB-06MSP-BLOCK58-Lot1.08. One Harvard Way applicant is seeking amended final preliminary and final major site plan, parking waivers, buffer waivers, and submission waivers from submitting a TIS, EIS, and CIS to construct an additional 27 porous pavement parking spaces on a property in the I-3 Light Industrial Zone District.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Do roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessdai?
Yes.
Strobo?
Yes.
Sraji?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't, I don't think there was any correspondence. We, we talked about next meeting, which we're going to have on the, the 29th, correct?
That's correct, yes. So the 29th here, same time as always, 7:30. Just to go take you through the rest of the year, December 6th is the meeting, there's two applications that night, and December 13th, there's an application and that will be it for the year.
Okay, so the 6th and the 13th?
Yes, so the 29th, November 29th, December 6th, and December 13th. And then for those of you who will be joining us next year, the reorganization meeting will be January 10th at 7:00 PM.
Okay. If anybody, nobody else has anything else, then I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.